This conference will now be recorded.
The Rome City Council will come to order. Today is Thursday, January 25th, 2024. We're going to start out with, I don't think that the Dana is here, but I'm so glad Pastor Van Zandt is here.
Drive ahead and close your eyes. Dear the Father, I thank for this day, and I thank you for what you bless us with. I thank you for this great city, and I thank you for just the progress that we're making here, Lord. I pray that you'll please us watch over this city, and I pray that you'll please us be with our fire chief and our police chief, and also all the staff at City Hall, and I pray that you'll please us bless them and just allow them to make the best decision for this city. Lord, I pray that you'll please us be with the city council, and I pray that you'll please to place your hand upon them and just allow them to make the best decisions for this city as we move forward, and Lord would be careful to give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. One state under God, one and indivisible. Very good.
Thank you.
Public comments. The council is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, they may make a statement of fact regarding the item or policy. They may also ask that the item be placed on a future agenda, or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. Public comments require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, are limited to three minutes, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. There will be no yielding of time to another person engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult or slander. Any individual should be caused removal from council chambers.
Okay. Josh McCabe about future agenda items.
Good evening, Council. Josh McCabe, Crown Point. Rome has always been looked down upon for the political inadequacies that some show when it comes to performance of their duties. In recent months, I've been attending meetings and events throughout the county, and it never fails that someone comes up to me with praise for Rome city staff. In one instance, city staff has approached me with praise of Chief Debus and the work he has done to turn our police department around. They were also inquiring about Chief's active shooter training. They've heard great things about it and were wanting to know if he would be interested in presenting this to their city staff. I assured them he would be happy to and should just reach out to him. Multiple members of several cities have also explained how great it is to work with Amanda, that she is truly knowledgeable in many areas. She's easy to work with, she's professional, and always happy to assist where she can. These aren't the only praises that have been brought to me, but there have been many others about many of our city staff members. All too often, we forget to recognize those that keep our city running on a regular basis. Instead, we wait until a week of court clerks or a week of policing, instead of being more proactive and recognizing those that run the day-to-day business of our city. I would like to encourage our council and our staff to be proactive and find alternative ways to recognize our staff members on a more regular basis than just once a year. All too often, we hear that they don't get paid enough for what they do, but sometimes it isn't about pay, it's about morale and recognition. Taking care of our employees and recognizing the hard work that they do can go a long way. While Rome's political landscape is less than desirable, cities in the county are now looking to Rome staff for assistance and collaboration based on their newfound professionalism, knowledge, and willingness to work together with other communities for everyone's best interest. So let's recognize those that truly keep the city running, not our council, the Rome staff, and first responders. Thank you.
Next, we have Jill Garcia. I'd like to speak on SB 2440 and rainwater harvesting.
Awesome. Well, good evening, council members. Jill, geologist and assistant general manager with the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District, or UTGCD. Either way, it's a mouthful. I have spoken previously at some public events on our annual rainwater harvesting grant program that's ongoing, essentially in certain areas of Wise County and in all four of our jurisdictional county areas, groundwater isn't always available or at an optimal quality. And so we want to make sure that organizations, nonprofits, cities, and municipalities are aware about our ongoing program. We're essentially blessing different communities with rainwater harvesting systems. The previous systems that have been completed are anywhere from 40,000 to 65,000 gallons worth of storage, and they're collecting off of barns and structures and even, you know, large community centers. So we did just want to make y'all aware, and I understand y'all are limited by what can occur on a public comment, but did want to make y'all aware of that. The second item that I wanted to mention is the passing of Senate Bill 2440, which if y'all are familiar, several legislative bills passed in September of last year and became effective, while others became effective in January 1st of this year. This bill changes existing government code to now, get ready, any platted subdivision or any sub development going through the plating process with the county now shall have a groundwater availability study completed. It used to be, the verbiage was "may," and there were many groundwater studies in the past when plaques went in or subdivisions were developed, they were waived for a variety of reasons. Now, starting January 1st, any new plaque submitted to a plating authority, yourselves, Wise County, Parker, Hood, the entire state actually, need to have those studies completed. And the Upper Trinity has actually entered into an interlocal agreement with Wise and Parker County at this time to review those studies on their behalf. These studies look at groundwater availability at 10 years and at 30 years. So we're pretty much going to be able to look at the future of groundwater for some of these new builds and provide landowners with strategic tools that they didn't have in the past. I just wanted to come and introduce myself, as I'm going to be the project manager for these groundwater studies. So if y'all have any questions, please feel free to give our office a call. I did want to also mention that while the counties have entered into interlocal agreements, cities and municipalities can also enter into interlocal agreements with us. The city of New Fairview is pursuing that currently. I heard that Aurora and Boyd are looking to do the same, and then the town of Enid and North in Parker County has entered into that. So essentially, there will be no fee to y'all. The fee is passed on to the developer, and we're able to look at their data, recreate their models, and determine what sort of groundwater future is going to be available for that subdivision. So we're happy to provide that service, and if the council is interested in that interlocal agreement or just reviewing the documents, our office would be happy to send that. But I appreciate y'all's time this evening, and thank y'all for conserving rainwater.
Jill Garcia, thank you. I'm sorry. Next speaker is Ashley Majors.
I didn't put anything together, but I wanted us to welcome Quick Trip that opened today. But also, I wanted to let everybody know that if you have friends that are passing through to Boy, Bridgeport, Paradise, please let them know to still support our small businesses and our, you know, stop by, you know, support Dollar General, pick up a pizza, Mr. Jones, grab something refreshing at Time Out. That helps our tax dollars. It helps us, it helps your, you know, kids in the future, as well as, you know, our roads. So they're passing through our town. So that's all I wanted to say is, you know, help support the businesses. So if you can, they're passing through. So thank you so much. And also, counsel to the citizens that are listening, and future citizens, you voted for your council members, your mayor, send them an email directly if you want something on the agenda. They can help us and help our community. That's the only way we can get things done to make our community a better place. We all want a place to call home. So thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up, that's the last of the speakers?
Okay, good. Announcements, February 6th, 2024, bulk pickup. February 10th, the Council Capital Improvement Workshop at, I believe you scheduled that at 8 o'clock. Is that correct, Mrs. DeGan? Very good. February 20th, Citizens Police Academy begins. February 19th, City Hall is closed to observe President's Day. February 22nd, council meeting, 6 o'clock. And then we'll go on to, I'm sorry, does the council have any announcements?
Do we have a meeting on February 8th also?
Yes, ma'am, we do. I apologize, that did not make this listing.
We have a meeting on February 8th also.
That'd be at 6 o'clock. That's a regular scheduled council meeting. All right, I just went by the list provided by Mrs. DeGan. Consent agenda. If council has no objection, there's two of those items. I'd like to pull off a consent agenda and discuss those. Get a little more information on them, please. If council has no objection. Good, good. All right, so consent agenda approval council minutes from January 11th, 2024. Motion?
Which one? Is it number one?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, number one on the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and go ahead and pull those other two down to regular agenda. I know he's not here, but we have a little more information on the racial profiling report and what that's all about.
I'm not sure what kind of information you're looking for, Mayor. That is simply a report that the police department is required to submit each year to the council for review. All of the figures and the data are included in your packet, as was the agenda commentary from Chief Debus.
We have any questions on that? Okay, all right, then I guess we'll get a vote on it. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the racial profiling report.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Renewal of the Encore membership. And I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that that is just standard. Do we need any further information on that, Mrs. DeGan?
Everything was in the packet that was needed for this agenda item.
All right. Motion?
Make a motion to accept the renewal of Encore membership.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Regular agenda, senior center update. In fact, would council object if we moved the electric providers? Because we've got them here. Would they object if we moved those above the senior center discussion? All right. Then we're going to go to item two, electric providers for the city, and that's between me and Mrs. Ty. Do you have something you need to present, or?
No, I don't. And I told them that it would be better if they came to present, but they didn't. So that information that I provided.
We've got a couple of people here.
Oh, is there someone from?
Yeah, we've got someone here from Spartan Energy, and also from TXU.
The one that I inquired about, they didn't show up.
Okay. Well, do we flip a coin to see who goes first with presentations? TXU, would you mind if we take the Spartan Energy folks first? Okay, very good.
Wesley, I'm the other Wesley of Spartan Energy. Presentation-wise, we went through this a couple of months ago. I'm happy to answer any questions. Right now, what I have is pretty much just kind of a refresh agreement that I did this morning, and then I did one prior to driving here as well. So mine's very short. I don't know if TXU would like to go in terms of payout, but I'd be happy to pass this out.
I think it's going to come down to the rate that's offered.
Just to reiterate, this is the same one that you got previous months. I'm open to whatever questions you may have, or what we use a brokerage do compared to a regular R E P, because there are differences in terms of the benefits. I'm an open book.
Well, on this one, it looks like originally when they came, it was 081, and now it was, then it was 082, and now it's 079 per kilowatt hour.
Correct. Yeah, it's lowered a little bit. I even got a, the one that I got that I priced prior to coming here is even lower, which I was going to address with you. The market is always changing. The previous month, when we first showed up in the month, November and October, we're trying to get it as close as we can and negotiate with NRG, but it is forever changing. That's why, you know, if we were to push again, I'm not sure what it's going to be. Most likely, it would be something close, obviously, but it is forever changing.
So, I'm sorry, this rate, it's kind of locked down since our contract is from 10124?
Yes.
So it'll stay?
So your contract with TXU, that's a fantastic rate you signed on five years ago or so. I would never want to try and tell you to get out of that because it's not in your best interest. So we're going to ride, the goal would be to ride it out until it expires, and then we're, mainly what we do for our brokerage is advance market pricing. We try and do early renewals to get you all set up, give you a price for today for the future. Realistically, you know, we caught you late when we first met. My goal, or best case scenario, and going in the future, is we would have done this three years ago, and then you would probably have a different one, or a higher one. Just because we don't want to mess with any previous agreement you have. We're just looking to try and take care of you and advocate for you for the future. That's pretty much it. Granted, right now, you expire in, I believe, October, so there's less leverage or time to really do it. A lot of changes have happened since the freeze, a lot of people moved to Texas. The market is just not the same for five years.
Miss DeGan, has our city attorney had a chance to look over these contracts?
He has not gotten back with me from the time that he's looked at it before, and he was unavailable this evening. He's out of town.
Are you interested in the lower rate that I got on the way in? It was a 7.5, so it drops a little bit further.
I do have a question, because the other guy, Mr. Bigby, when he was here the last time, he had told us that the, many of those fees were just junk fees, and we would not be charged for any of those.
That's one of the benefits of, like, working with us, you know, we advocate for you. I aim for a clean bill, maybe in just full transparency. So we make sure that there's no crazy, like, base charges, which you'll see under the contract charge on like the third line, there's a $0 base charge. Currently on your bill, you guys have Hulu's $8 or $9 kind of base charge or customer charge. There's metering fees. There's other things that companies add in there. We advocate that, you know, you use this amount of energy, this is what you pay for, minus TDU and kind of Encore charges. That, no, that's okay.
Okay. Do you have specifically some of the other charges that he was referring to that he would consider junk charges that we wouldn't be charged for?
Now, what I'm referring to on this one is strictly just going to be the bill that you guys sent us to work off of, which I believe was from August. You guys have many service addresses, but just to go over some, you have, so there's two sections of your bill. You have a electric service commercial charge, which that one should just have pretty much your, what you use. On there, you have a, you have a section that's just called other charges. Who knows? I have no idea what that is. You have that on all of your vehicles. So it's not very transparent in that regard. If you look into your electric service distribution section, you have a base charge, which is similar to a, like a customer charge, kind of like a junk charge you get for, like, a cell phone provider. They kind of tack on fees for using them. You have a metering charge, your other charge for distribution, transmission, recovery factor, those are all just normal Encore charges. There's nothing wrong with those. You have a PUC assessment, which is a legit charge, but it's double. So you have one in the Encore charges, but you also have a double up on just the electric charges. So it's kind of like a double dip that is unnecessary. Like I said, all these are on every single one of your.
Wesley, you're discussing these charges, but is there any way we can get a definitive list? These are the charges that are not going to appear?
I can definitely mark one up and show you of what we deem as essential and non-essential. It's perfectly okay.
Yeah, I asked Wesley one to do that. I've never received that, so I'd like to receive that.
Of course, I can do that. Is it okay if it's on a previous bill, like this one that I'm working with, or?
Absolutely. Bills are pretty static.
Gotcha. I will do that for you. I'll just give them a quick highlight, show you what we deem as not necessary. And then sometimes, you know, the rates are great and low, but when you add them up and do the math, the rate is actually higher. So sometimes, it looks like I'm the bad guy because I'm charging X amount, when really, if you do the math, it's all very, it can be very similar. The main difference is the benefits of what we can do for you. Like I said, the main thing that we like to do in terms of advocating preuse, right when you're qualifying for early renewal, we take care of it. So.
And just like any other sales situation, as time goes on, we lose leverage on the rate?
Absolutely.
Simply because the futures market gets tighter up to that time?
Yeah, if we decide to wait more, like the summer comes, or God is taxed, like usual, you know, people that are month to month, they get charged more because they're not in a fixed rate. It's the same situation in terms of, the market will most likely blow up to reflect. Same thing with the freeze that just happened the previous week. I've seen people with that, were expecting much higher rates because the demand is much higher. It's very much a supply and demand situation. That's why it's important to be locked into a contract, like you guys are talking about. We're just trying to make it to where you're protected for as long as possible. There's no reason, in our opinion, to go five years, set it and forget it, and then address it five years later, because things change, especially when you're eligible for an R E P. We can mitigate those changes, put a cap on it. So let's say right now, we sign at 7.5, the summer hits, something kind of dropped, what have you, and now charges are 12 cents, when, and we haven't secured anything, or we did secure something, you guys are safe from 12 cents. You already signed. So you're locked into the first round. It's just, it's just further protection. The electricity is the electricity. I have nothing to offer. The lights aren't any brighter with me versus them. It's all the same. It's just what can be done is essential. And for us, since we're not in R E P ourselves, it's in our best interest to advocate for you, keep you happy as a customer, because I would like a long-term relationship to look out for you. It's not just a, you know, what's up, this up, I'll see you in five years when it's time to renew. You know, if something happens, you can contact me directly. I'm your point of contact. There's no sitting on the phone for 30 minutes, get a sales rep, realize that you're a city, and they have to get a bigger sales rep to help you out. It's, you call me, you have my cell phone, you need to put in a new rec center or something, I get it handled. Make sure that it's.
NRG is actually a division of Reliant Energy, correct?
It's, NRG, but yes, it's, TXU and NRG are the biggest in the state. They own a huge umbrella of smaller companies.
And your job is that of a broker with Spartan Energy Solutions?
Yes, we're, they're number one broker.
Just a quick question. I, just whenever I'm looking, I mean, even local businesses, I look them up. But I pulled up from the franchise tax account status, Spartan Energy Solutions LLC, out of Houston, 1,000 North Post Oak Road, Suite 250. It does show the franchise tax involuntarily ended, and that's basically your right to transact business in Texas. Do you have an explanation?
To my knowledge, I'm unaware of that. We've been running business smoothly and had no issues. I had an appointment today to do a close, and NRG let it go through. To speak on that, I'd be happy to. So get some info.
Okay, yeah, this, I just pulled it yesterday, so that was of some concern. Okay, you guys have any other questions?
And just to verify, if rates go down, y'all don't look out for us if a rate goes down, and you're like, okay, rates are down, we're going to change it to that rate?
That's one of the benefits of a brokerage, that's, we do look out for you. We have a thing called blend and extend. If rates go down, generally, there is a threshold for that, because the rates go, have been low so frequently. If it goes like a tenth of a penny, I'm not going, we're not going to visit it. But if it does, something significant happens, we blend and extend it for the drop it to match more of what the market actually is, given the situation, and then we'll extend you out for perfect financial. So that's something that it's like a brokerage kind of. We've had to do it maybe, I believe, twice as a company, both related to pandemic. Just because mainly, it's better to keep you happy than to, something to drop, and now you're mad at me, and then time comes, and you're just going to switch on.
So with you only, you having done this twice as a company, what defines a significant drop?
Generally, it's closer to a penny of a change. Yeah, so if something closer to a full penny changes, because we get market reports, if something happens, you realize that, you know, this is not in your favor. Because I don't work for NRG specifically or anything like that, I'm working for you. I advocate for you. It's not, it's my best interest, as I said, to keep you happy.
As information, according to my math, which could be wrong, a penny represents about $6,000 annually to the city.
Annually, that sounds about. Yeah, for one bill to the next, it might seem small, similar to like a junk charge or anything. It's insurmountable in comparison to how many meters you guys are currently operating. But over the course of the five-year contract, it adds up. So.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, and we've got TXU reps here as well. I believe Mrs. James, and Ms. Michelle, and Ms. Sherry. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamika Jane. I am your current account manager for your services with TXU Energy. I've given you a packet that has new information regarding TXU Energy, and just a little bit about myself first. I have been, I have been employee for TXU Energy for 23 years. I have had you all's accounts since 2014. So I've been through a couple of layers. What's in your packet here is a copy of your bill, a copy of your current contract, and then the proposal is the last page of the form that you all have right now. And a couple things, the rate, of course, right now is at 4.1 cents per kilowatt hour. With that rate that you have, you will always have your transmissions charge that you'll see on the lower portion of your bill for you. The rates are locked in. We do have the blend and extend for you all now. We also have what's called subsite, so if you all have to move any of your meters around for any reason, Ms. Patricia or maybe Ms. Amanda will call and say, hey, Tamika, this is what we need to do. If you need it, I'll communicate and we'll get it done for you. That's it. I am your rep. I do know that when Ms. Patricia was calling in, perhaps she didn't know who her accountant was, but I've had you guys for a long time. If you go through your packet and look at the rates that we offer, as Ms. Patricia said, this is all about rates, too. I look at a 60-month, a 36, and a 48-month, as you can see. We also added what's called add/delete, which means that if you need to add any new sites or delete any sites, there's a 20% split, which means that you'll get 2% add, 10% delete, and that is over the term of your contract. So it's not like on a annual basis, or most reps or most companies that operate. So it's not like on a annual basis, or most reps or most companies that offer that to you. The other thing is that you guys are already taxed, they're with us, so you know, we're not even taxed or anything for the season. And then on the 36, on the 60-month term, you see that that rate is 0.06057, and the 48-month is 06125, and then the 36 is 06147. And again, if the market changes during that time, and we want to look at that rate, we will do that for you. If not, kind of keep it there, and then of course you can still have your transmissions charges. Anyone have any questions?
So it looks like this rate is 20 cents lower than the NRG rate. Is that about right? But y'all also add in charges that they don't add, so I'm trying to figure out, is that a wash or?
No ma'am, that is not a wash, and we do not, there's probably a jump fee, and I have here as our marketing relationship person.
I'm sorry, Tamika, so that our people who are watching online, if you can speak, you got to get really comfortable with that microphone.
Okay. Okay, yeah, yes, right. And so those fees that, speaking of, anything that's on here that says electric service, distribution, those charges are all encore. Anything above there is all TXU Energy. So one of the charges here that says other, and the securitization.
Hi, this is Sherry Wiegand, and I'm on the Market Relations Team with TXU Energy. One of my roles is I interface with all of the transmission and distribution utilities such as Encore. And so if there's ever any questions about the TDU portion, we typically look at all of those and have a better idea of what those are going to be. Those, of course, are approved by the PUC, and we just pass those through. There's absolutely no markup in that, whatever Encore charges TXU, and you see all of those broken down. So that base charge, that metering charge, those are all encore fees that are charged to TXU, and we just pass those through. The charges that are on the top portion, the electric service commercial, I think we mentioned Winter Storm Yuri here earlier, and that securitization, that's a result of Winter Storm Yuri. And all reps, excuse me, all reps are assessed, that securitization, that comes from ERCOT. The PU, the PUKA, the PUC assessment, that is also always assessed to you, anyone acting in the ERCOT market, where you have the, you'll have it on the Encore side, and you also have it on the TXU side. So that's what represents those charges at the top, just to give you a little bit better. Gross receipts is, is just, that's a, that's a tax, I know you're taxed exempt, but everybody still has to pay the gross receipts. So we just itemize that out for you. Does that help on those, on those other charges, trying to explain them?
I think so. I think one of the concerns was that we were not able, or may not be able, to sign a new contract until the current contract expires. Is that true?
No ma'am, you all already signed. I will re-sign the contract to Ms. Patricia or whoever wants to sign it, sign it, send it in, if you're new, break, don't take a stay until you're November.
But we could lock in a rate?
Yes ma'am, you can lock in right now.
And clarify for us again, if we go to a five-year contract, the rate is 0.6, what?
Yes ma'am, 0.6. 0.6, I don't know.
I see the 48 here.
0.6057.
0.6057, okay. And what's your, I'm looking at our total for the year, we use about $2 million?
So for this one, you actually use $620,000 per year.
Okay.
The one that had that $2 million on there, that covered the span of the five years.
I see.
That's why I put it down, so it would buy, buy you a calendar.
Okay. Do you have a, just a rough figure on, like if they're charging a 0.79, and the extra charges that are, like you said, pass-through charges, Encore, et cetera, and yours? What is the, I mean, is, obviously it's going to be more than whatever the standard this rate is.
Yes ma'am, and you know what, I did not, but if you can give me a few moments, I can calculate for, just, I'll take a look at one of your larger rates, one of your larger bills, and calculate that number for you, so you'll know. And what I would do, is I would just take, like this would just have 70 cents, and I'd use those numbers there, and then multiply both with 70, I think it said 75 was the last number, and I would be 6 over 57.
Paper shows 0.79 on that.
Oh.
Today was 0.75.
Right.
Yes ma'am. Anyone else have any questions?
Do we have any costs if we, if we did change, I mean, just on the off chance that we did change, is there any cost in readjusting everything we've got from TXU to somebody else? Because we've got 29 meters.
Not, only for your, probably your tax intentions additive, because you definitely have to make sure that they had that paperwork ready for you.
I see.
Once you change your contract, you have to get all of that started over again.
I see.
I have a question for you, on the blend and extend, do you all reach out to us when the rate goes down, or do we as staff have to monitor that and reach out to you?
No. No ma'am, I would reach out to you and say, hey, market is looking a little bit different now, let people can do something a little bit different for you.
So our current contract that we've been in, did we get to take advantage of that at all?
No ma'am, because you're at 4.1 now, and it has not been any more than that. We do not want to do any.
Well, we're glad to have it.
Let me ask you again, is this a contract that Carbon, that our attorney will need to review also?
Generally, Carbon would review any contract that we enter into, however, we're currently with TXU, so I don't know that there would be an in-depth need for that, since we'd just be continuing what we currently have.
Can we ask Wesley another question?
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, so you're at 7.5 cents?
Yes.
And they're at 6 cents?
Correct.
Can y'all get to 6 cents?
Oh, it's above me, I could definitely try. Did they prescribe a different, some different rules and stuff, or how they would, right? So, but certainly somewhere I would look.
I don't, I'm comfortable moving forward, you know, I don't know how much longer we want to kick the can down the road. I feel like this has been two months.
That would be my question. I don't know, from, I know that when we've talked with Wesley, he has to run it each time. I don't know if TXU, if this amount is good and holds good for two weeks, or are you in that same position? If they don't make a decision this evening, and then they bring it back at the meeting on the 8th of February, I'm assuming we would have different rates at that point. Thank you.
I move to extend the contract for five years with TXU at a rate of 0.06057.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
And all in favor to extend, renew the contract with TXU for a period of five years?
No, it would be a different contract, it's a different contract.
You have to specify the year because it affects the rate, so it wouldn't be three to five years, it would be the five-year term.
The five-year term.
And it will begin November 1st of next year, well, I'm sorry, this year, November 1st.
We have a first and a second for that?
Hold on, I think it's, is it October 1st?
November 1st.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a, we've got a first gang, we've got a second with Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Mrs. James and crew, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Wesley, for coming as well. Okay, let's go to the, ladies, thank you, I know you've had to come a distance over here. Is somebody else driving besides her? Okay. I want one, I want one, I want one. Are you in the office tomorrow? I'll give you a call. All right. Thank you, thank you for coming. Very good. All right, let's, we're going to back up to number one now, Senior Center update and management structure, and that's Councilmember Loftus.
You know, I've heard over the time I've been here in town, about how it was, how so important it was to the seniors, how they enjoyed the activities at the Senior Center. And it obviously provided a way that we could all meet, break bread together, and act as a community. I think at that time, though, we had some senior leadership that was in town, that really took hold of that, the management of that facility, under their own initiative, and that's what drove the place. My concern is, you know, I didn't come here tonight with a management structure for you, for that facility, nor do I know that we can actually repair it for $30,000. But I question, is our community willing to stand up and have a community for seniors and for others? I would like to see, personally like see, us have a facility for seniors and the rest of the community, where we could have activities, such as maybe a pancake day, or a spaghetti dinner, and fundraising efforts for other organizations that may be in the community. I guess my question is, do, does our community have the willingness and the ability and the leadership to actually pull it off for the Senior Center? And that's my question.
Don't they have events at the library right now?
Yes, they do. And there is a leader who drives that, a couple of folks drive that. And so that's the question, is that group willing to continue in a facility provided by the city?
I'm wondering about the possibility of putting together some kind of subcommittee to kind of talk about that. I don't know how that works, we've never done that before since I've been on council, so Mr. Gamble might need your guidance.
Yeah, maybe we can direct her to look into it and see if they're wanting to have some sort of subcommittee for, for the Community Center or for the Senior Center?
I'd just like to remind everyone that the, the library is really at its capacity for serving the community. At the senior luncheons, it is full. And out also, relative to activities for homeschoolers, that facility is full. And so I just want to point that out to any seniors who would like to take on that leadership position, that that is the case, that the library is at its capacity.
One of those who does go to those monthly luncheons, that was put together by private citizens after the COVID, and then, you know, folks weren't allowed to use the Senior Center any longer. And the library was very gracious, Mrs. Kemp was very gracious to allow us to start up and get something going. It has been consistent, yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't have the same, you know, some, some months, we've got a lot of folks show up, and then other months, not so much. And we limited to once a month, because it was just too much, and we couldn't get enough support for it, to go to a weekly type of thing. I'm glad the van meters are here this evening, they've been instrumental, between the two of them, they started that library. And we are very grateful that you do allow us to come in once a month, and as long as they are so gracious, I don't see, I don't see that anyone that's involved in getting it together, I don't think anyone's willing to back away from it, as long as the library continues to be so gracious towards us. And our library ladies, we always go in when, you know, after we pray, I always go in and tell them, ladies, soup's on. So, and we, you know, it's not just limited to seniors, we have, you know, we've opened it up for, you know, it's a community lunch.
And I guess that's my question, is it, is it for the entire community, is it for a specific group? How do we advertise that to the community?
Put it out there on social media.
Is it city, city funds the library?
This goes to a bigger question, as far as events within the city, and to Mr. Loftus' conversation about a pancake breakfast, or spaghetti dinner, or something to that effect, this is us getting our feet under us as a community, and what do we want to offer? So now that we have our funds kind of in much better shape to know what's in our hotel motel tax, and we know what we could potentially allocate for driving tourism within Rome, we will need to look at what type of events we want to hold. This, to me, is part of that, to be folded in. I was always under the impression it was a senior luncheon, and pretty much limited to seniors from that angle. I have been told that this facility was used quite frequently, and staff would go and visit the lunches when the seniors would host them, and were kind of co-mingled in and a part of it. I don't believe staff goes to the library, I don't know if anyone else does from that view, but the library is separate and apart from the City of Rome, they are a standalone 501(c)(3), and they run their own entity. And I think that causes a little confusion for folks in the community, because it's called the Rome Library, which it's within our city limits, and we want to certainly support and advertise for those things that they have going on there, but I don't really have any clear direction from council at this point, and I've not had a chance to meet with Ms. Kemp, other than to talk to her about the donation that the city provides to the library every year, and the amount of $600 for a grant for them.
I'd just like to repeat that, you know, the library does welcome the senior citizens to have their luncheon, however, the facility is nearing its end of life, it just simply is, and as the Rome Community Library, it's not the Rome Public Library. You know, that is a goal of the Community Library, that we have a new library to serve the community, and so you can go at their websites and see the plan. However, the question is, are we going to break bread together and commune as a community? And I don't believe that facility is going to be able to do that.
I think maybe the larger discussion has to happen, maybe partly at our February 10th meeting, where we're talking about some of those big items and where we're going.
Correct. It would come under the facilities conversation that we have scheduled for them.
Yes, and, I mean, if we're going to possibly have some sort of subcommittee, it could be just for the events and for things that could happen in the Community Center, not necessarily, I mean, if the, it sounds like the seniors don't want to leave the library, so it would just be for whatever else we wanted to do, I guess. I mean, we would most definitely want the seniors to go, but if they don't want to, we can't force them, so.
And it also goes to the question of this structure we have, right? And it also goes to the question of this structure we have right here to the left of us and status of that disposition of it. And so, yeah, maybe a fitting discussion for the meeting.
It is on that agenda.
Also, just curious, you mentioned something at one of our meetings when we were talking about funding, I think, about municipal court funds, and that those funds were designated solely for that. And this is our municipal court space, and the staff has done a good job of trying to make it court-like and a good use for us as a council space as well. So I also wonder about the possibility of it becoming a community space. I don't know if they, I mean, kind of crossing funds, but it might be utilized because we only use the municipal court how many days a month?
Two or three. Just depends on the number of trials they have scheduled and court hearings they have with the judge. But the thing with the, the court funds themselves, they're restricted to the building that either houses the municipal court office or hosts the court facility itself. A lot of times municipalities will share their council chambers with the court in order to take advantage of some of those restricted funds. The building security, for instance, the metal detector that you see back here in the corner was purchased through those building security funds. It could be used for council meetings or any other meeting that you chose if that was the case, but it is dedicated for court use for sure and came out of that money. We also have technology money that I understand when this system was purchased, part of that money was used to help with the cost, to defray some of the cost of this recording system. That is mostly depleted, the technology fund at this point, because there are ongoing charges that we pay out of that each year to handle the court software and some other subscription services that they have. But we will always look to see how restricted funds can be used on behalf of the greater good of the entirety of the city of Rome instead of just individual pots of money.
Okay. And maybe we also look at HVAC system for the municipal court specifically?
Yes, that would certainly be a nice upgrade. One of the things that we will talk about in this building specifically, I understand that above these drop-down ceiling tiles, there's no insulation in this building, which is why it will not hold heat or cooling. We also have issues with these original windows that have been in here for many, many years. And if you stand at the right time, you can see the cracks through the side for the lights. So we're going to need to address that if we want to reduce some of our electric consumption. So there are some things we can do just baseline to make this more effective and a more efficient building. So we'd really like to see from council's view, what could we host as a community to start bringing people together? And if this building to, to our left is not going to be used by the seniors, but could be something for the community itself, and even at some point could be rented out to people within the community if they wanted to host a large family gathering, something to that effect. The money that we talked about using, the $30,000, is not going to make that a brand-new building. It will simply get the very basics taken care of that we need to get taken care of so that it meets those basic life safety issues. But yes, all of this is already on the agenda for the 10th, which has already been posted, so we don't have any issues with that.
Again, Mr. Loftus?
Thank you.
If anybody's listening online, those senior, those lunches, we call it a community lunch anymore. It's the first Friday of the month at noon at the public, at the Rome Community Library. Thank you, Mrs. Van Meter. God bless you and your crew for letting us.
And the banana pudding is today.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's Mr. Fitch is the banana pudding. And Mrs. Myes makes really, really good goulash. And, and what do you want? I'm sorry. This is B. Kraft. Oh, hold on, Mrs. Van Meter, and I'll get to you next.
When that was being used for the weekly senior lunch, it was never just seniors. It was open to anybody, and a lot of people came. But we also, it was also rented out for bridal showers, wet baby showers, family reunions, just...
Dominoes in the Thursday evenings.
Dominoes, yeah, all kinds of things. So the community did use it for a lot of other things. It wasn't dependent on seniors or the senior lunch.
Mrs. Van Meter. Come talk to the microphone. I'm sorry.
In the 1960s and 70s, that was the community center, okay? So we even had our wedding shower in that building. I mean, that is, was, a, a community center. I was shocked, of course, we grew up, moved away, we came back, and then it was called the senior citizen. And I'm going, huh? But then everyone can use it, whatever you want to call it, but it's open to what, just the way she described. Your seniors can go there for lunch on whatever day of the month they appear or want to, et cetera. So however you want to charge or to rent or whatever, but a community center, I really think is needed. Now, your, those seniors and the community luncheon is always welcome at the library. And it is out on our media, right, Randall? I'm pretty sure.
Listed as an event.
Yeah.
As an event, and for the community. It's not just seniors.
Your call always puts it out.
But it was specially started as seniors. So I'm saying, don't, don't think I'm saying we don't want anyone at our library activity room. We do, and that's a reason we have it to share with the community.
Mrs. Van Meter, thank you so much. Any other comments? All right, move along. Number three, letter to TexDOT supporting light at Biwell Development Intersection. I brought this up before, and it looks like we do have a letter. Mrs. King is going to address it.
Okay, this is, yes, Mayor Mitchell brought this up last week, and we, council discussed some kind of resolution. So you have, council has it there.
This, this is very basic. I'm happy to make whatever changes you all would like to see to the letter. This is why it's stamped draft, so feel free to editorialize however you see fit.
And is the current issue available funding? I mean, that's what they've said. They don't have money to put a light up.
That's what I have been told when I have attended some TexDOT's meetings. I did notice, and I was talking to a resident actually earlier today, that they are putting a light down. I believe it's the wildflower edition on 114. You will notice that that pole is powder coated. It is very likely being funded by the development and not by the city because TexDOT does not powder coat your poles unless you pay for it. So just bear that in mind. When I saw that, I got a little fussed that they would put one there and they wouldn't, or at least haven't, excuse me, discussed about putting one down here. And then I noticed the painting on it, and so it's very likely being funded by private dollars.
Yeah, I would like to beef, beef the letter up just a little bit. Teeth is not the word that I want, but gum, something, a little more.
I'm happy to send it to you all if you want to do that in Word and send it back to me.
I can do that.
This was just to kind of get us going to see if there was any particular vein or thought that we missed in this.
And I also believe that there's power in numbers, so I appreciate Mayor Mitchell's, Mitchell's signature on there, but I would like council's names and places on there as well if we're in support, if we're all in favor.
So we're just gonna beef it up? Do we need a motion or anything on that? Or just direction?
Just direction, I think.
Okay. Beef it up? And you all will be in touch with the city administrator? Okay, very good. Yes?
So a lot of people in the neighborhood have already written, or written to that TexDOT a ton, probably one or two of us who have done that, with the same response of we're in the five to 10-year plan. So I don't know if you guys have that information. But also, is there any way to make that letter available to the neighborhood so that they understand that the city is making that letter? There's a lot of talk on our neighborhood page about what the city's doing. And I want to make sure that they understand that you guys are...
I think once we send a letter, we can share that.
We can put it out there.
Well, probably the most effective way, because as we have learned recently, we do need to do something about our communication with our residents. Facebook and the website is not sufficient, and we are going to have to do a better job in that realm. I would recommend that we mail a copy to everyone's home with a cover letter that I'm happy to draft that explains your work behind the scenes on this issue so that they're aware of what your efforts have been, because there is a great amount of misunderstanding that seems to circulate on social media as it relates to Rome.
That would be an excellent idea.
One more quick question I had was, is there any intention on the city to help with funding? Are we able to, or is it just about trying to push them forward?
That would be a council conversation and something that we could certainly bridge at our discussion on the 10th about capital improvement. I don't, it's an excellent question. I don't know what the cost is for that. The last time I priced one, it was in the six figures, but I don't know if it's in the low side or the high side of six figures now, so we would need to find out.
And it's a state highway, so...
Correct. But they, if, they will move it closer to the top of the list if you have partnering funding for certain things, yes.
Would you also share with the citizens of Biwell what they've received from TexDOT? If they will afford it, I'm gonna work on this letter for Miss Deegan, and if they'll afford it to me. I don't know what my email address is, council member four something, something. But that would help me to know what they've responded previously.
Did this young lady state her name?
Michelle Peterson.
Thank you.
I stated it wrong. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be... You can tell us if you'd like. She's, she's a Biwell resident. Okay, moving along. Traffic congestion discussion, and that's Councilmember Ty.
Okay, so we've received several letters from a concerned citizen. And this particular one was in regards to traffic congestion. And it's, it's from a previous mayor. His name's Mr. Godfrey. And he was the mayor back, I think, in 2014. It's, I think his wife was the city secretary when he was the mayor, so... But he often speaks of transparency, so I kind of wanted to, to address it in this forum since this is the most transparent forums, city council meeting. And I want to just read some of the excerpts from the, from the letter and just kind of answer those, those questions that he's had. So this traffic congestion is 3433 over 287 going into Main, or, you know, when it turns into Main and the access roads off of 287 that back up. Also, there's a U-turn that people are, there's a no-U-turn sign right there at Dairy Queen. Yeah, where the two lanes merge together right past Dairy Queen. There's no U-turn. People U-turn. It's dangerous. So the first thing he says, firstly, the alarming levels of traffic congestion we are experiencing significantly impacts our ability to commute effectively and punctually. We have growth out here. I mean, reunion is bringing in all sorts of people, so we're gonna have traffic. People have traffic everywhere. TexDOT does not think we're special. I mean, we are not at the top of their list to do things. So whatever they're planning, whatever their long-term idea is, they're not gonna push it to the forefront because we have traffic. It's just not gonna, not gonna happen. I have to drive down 183 to DFW Airport four days a week. That's traffic. Drive down 114 in Romanoke where all that construction's happening. That's traffic. This is, this is a, a little blip in the traffic congestion that, that is DFW. Our second, let's see, what else he says. "Our city residents deserve a transportation infrastructure that enables smooth traffic flow and reduces unnecessary delays. It is our elected officials' responsibility to comprise a solution to solve the traffic problem and not just push it aside. If we have money to give pay raises, then we have money to fix our serious traffic problems." First of all, we could have a billion dollars, and we can't fix our traffic problem because it's TexDOT that's doing it. It's not that. We can somehow write a letter, but they won't even put up a signal for people that are, for fatalities that are happening down 287 and 114. They won't do anything. So we're trying, but that's all we can do. We can't do anything else. We've, kind of, our hands are tied. He goes on to say, "The lack of designated U-turn points or properly enforced regulations have encouraged motorists to take hazardous U-turns at inappropriate locations." Again, that is TexDOT. U-turns can happen. They can occur anywhere on Main Street. People can do them legally as long as there's not a no-U-turn sign. So he wants these points. There's certain things that he wants to have solutions to this. The first one is traffic flow analysis. Conduct a comprehensive study to evaluate the current traffic situation, identify congestion hotspots, and assess the impact of U-turns on traffic flow. I don't know how the traffic flow analysis is going to assess the impact of U-turns on traffic flow, but we've done that before on 3433. We just did one. TexDOT did it. We have to request TexDOT to do it. Every, y'all are gonna hear like this whole theme, and it's always TexDOT. TexDOT is the driving force. They're the ones that are in control. Public awareness campaigns, this is his second one. Public awareness campaigns, launch an educational campaign to raise awareness about the importance of safe driving practices and respect for traffic rules. This should include specific information on responsible U-turn behavior and the risks associated with reckless maneuvers. So our police department have been a part of a public awareness campaign. They, they did it to help reduce fatalities by targeting speeding and traffic violations. This campaign was grant-funded, so they were, they were working overtime to do this. They also identified another area of concern, and it was the exit north of BC Rome. And people would take that exit from north 287, and Sergeant Grant can correct me if I'm wrong, but they could take that exit from north of BC Rome, and then they were making a U-turn down the service road to go back into town. So they, they did do a targeted campaign there to, to kind of stop that. And they got a no-U-turn sign placed there, correct? So that kind of slowed that down a little bit.
Sure.
So I'll tell you our experience, at least with the U-turns from the 287. We recognize a problem at several traffic accidents. People were trying to avoid the congestion that is by the way. So they would go north, come to a complete stop at 7 mile an hour off, and make a U-turn, which was illegal at the time because there was no sign, onto South Main. And actually cross over on common traffic because unless you have a tiny vehicle, you can just walk. We started contacting TexDOT, and it took almost six months to get TexDOT. First of all, it took about three months for us to get them to respond to us. And I was one that was spearheading a lot of it, constant phone calls, constant emails, to get their engineers, continuously asking their engineers to come out and look at the problem. And when we finally got that, they finally agreed to have a sign put up. We asked if we could put the sign up. We could have a sign up in a matter of weeks. Because it's TexDOT-controlled, we can't do anything about it. The first sign was ordered, and it was incorrect. The sign, what we needed was a no-U-turn light onto the front road. They actually put up a sign, no-U-turn left, I can't remember. But it's one issue that we deal with. The next time they came out, they put up a new red sign again. We were at a point where we were going to try and swap the signs just to alleviate with the no-U-turn sign on Main Street. It took a period of a little over six months to just get one single sign put up. It did alleviate some of them. One other thing, it was enforceable, but we can only enforce it when we're there. And so, hands are a little bit tied. We've only one officer on it. Where, you know, if we're not in Pioneer or we're not at Main Street or on 3433, there's one officer. Where, you know, if we're not in Pioneer or on Main Street or on 3433, there isn't an officer. So enforcement did help. The signage helps, but quite honestly, it's like putting your finger in the van trying to stop the break. If you're not sitting there at that very moment, even a sign is not going to stop. It's going to slow some down, but the majority of people will continue to do it. And the reason being is, most of these people coming through here are not residents. They're commuters, so they don't care anything about City of Rome. They just want to get to their destination.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you here in a minute. So his third point was to increase police presence and enforcement efforts to deter illegal U-turns and other traffic violations, which he kind of went over. Strict penalties and fines should be imposed on offenders to reduce seriousness of these safety concerns. Y'all have targeted that U-turn also, correct?
We have. We have issued a lot of citations. We've made a lot of stops. Those working policies, and he's targeted. But if we're not there, we're susceptible.
That's an issue every day, the U-turns in that area with one of the windows for both Kristi and myself that face the front of the building. We routinely hear the screeching of tires and the honking of horn, and we know exactly what's happening as soon as that occurs, and we're just waiting because it was just a matter of time before somebody gets seriously injured there. But I don't know what it would take to get those yellow pylons that kind of go along the road that doesn't allow for necessarily, unless you want to run them over, like they did in Decatur. But I don't know if you took six months to get a sign. I'm not sure how long it'd take if we could even get that.
So I have the thumb drive, and I don't know if it's going to work or not, but, yes. But also, we need to think about if we want a police presence, we would have to increase staffing. And do we do that? Can we do that? And that might be something for February 10th, but we have a motor officer, the reserve officer. Okay. So currently, our motor officer's out, but once he's back, he can probably do a lot of that targeting of those hotspots, too, but it's only 16 hours a month because he's a reserve.
Yes.
Yes. We could increase our motor units, which are considered budget-neutral evidently because of all the citations that they write. Is that kind of what you understand?
So I can answer that. Having come up through the municipal court world, municipal courts are not meant to be revenue generators, but it is a byproduct of citations that are issued. People who generally ride a motorcycle and are dedicated to traffic enforcement, especially for a community like ours, we could easily hire two motor officers and keep them busy the entirety of their shift. And even if they're not just writing citations per se, but they are present and accounted for and seen, that will cut down on fatalities and accidents and the illegal U-turns and other things of that nature. And certainly, once people start to understand that the community of Rome is taking this very seriously, we will see a drop in that. But they are budget-neutral for the most part because the corresponding revenue that's generated from any citation that they issue offsets the cost that it takes to pay them, put them in a uniform, lease the motorcycle, et cetera, et cetera.
So if we even think about that, we would also have to think about increasing police pay because no one wants to be a police officer anymore. Boyd, they have sign-on bonuses for their lateral transfers. Sorry, hold on. Boyd's TML rate is 58,000 to 70,000, and we're at 55 to 59. Why would they come to Rome when they can go to Boyd for 10,000 more and get a sign-on bonus on top of that? I mean, everything. Boyd is, their training budget's 20,000, ours is 4,000. That's our police department.
That's the whole police department, all of the staff.
Yeah.
I know that we have this community policing program that's coming up here. Is there any chance that that type of enforcement could be dovetailed into that?
So we have a Citizens Police Academy that's coming up and starting in February. That is being spearheaded by one of our officers who has been very successful with that program in a previous city that he worked for. As far as dovetailing it, I'm not sure what we're looking for. Could you give me some more information, or is that just educational?
I'm saying like enforcement on U-turns.
Yeah, but those people that go to those, they would probably not do the U-turn if it was a no-U-turn sign.
I think Mr. Loftus is talking more like Citizens on Patrol versus Police Academy.
Yes.
As far as the Citizens Police Academy is more geared, we have citizens that are interested in the run more by the police department. We have used, and I have experienced using social media to educate because enforcement and education are the craft of enforcement. Once again, though, you're only reaching a very limited number of people, and what we put out there may only be seen by five or 10% of the people that are coming in from all over and riding through. So it is a good tool to use, but really and truly enforcing it is most effective in continuous enforcement, invisible enforcement is what works.
No. We talked about electronic signage for the city hall for communication. It's right there at that U-turn place. If we did have that in there, perhaps that would be something to attract attention and achieve education also.
Or could it distract?
Well, it's, there is a sign. I have personally written dozens and made even more stops right there. There is a sign, and I often point out to them, where you make U-turn, you were two feet next to this sign that did not walk by anything. And most of the time, I was told on the phone, I wasn't looking, I didn't see it. And it really is, it's commuter traffic that is looking at nothing else but the endangerment of getting to work.
I do have a couple of questions. And Mrs. Stone? Yeah, we need you under the microphone. Please.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Stone. I'm new to Rome. What I noticed as being new, so fresh eyes, we lack a lot of street, the street paints, you know, like the, like when I'm coming off of 287, coming around Dairy Queen, we need brighter or like fresh lines because that is a huge public safety issue, not having, you know, brighter lines. And then coming up, if I go straight or turn, it would have been nice to have like the lines direct me, especially at night, so, you know, they're reflective, and then I can see what I'm supposed to be doing.
Again, part of that's going to be texted on.
I don't know. I think there needs to be a study then, like someone proposed.
It's a wonderful idea. We struggle with.
Also, when we're coming out, like lines really tell us everything. So if there is an area that people are doing U-turn, make sure that the lines are there that tell us as drivers what we can or cannot do. So if there is an intersection and people are doing U-turn, well, have the lines structured with, you know, however Tech Dot says, that tells us, hey, you can't do that. Like, you know, and for me as a driver, that's what I look to see, like how I can cross lanes, but, I mean, but we really don't have bright those lines. I don't know, like where I was, the town had to budget for that in the town, so our public works would be doing all of that, just like crosswalks, you know, before crosswalks. So, or a stop sign, you would have the lines there. I don't know what your budget is and whose responsibility is within this area to maintain our streets.
So that's where we get a good amount of confusion because all the streets that you're talking about are controlled by the state. They're not actual city streets, and so we don't have any ability to strike.
So Main Street is not our street?
No, that is a state business pass-through, if you will.
Maybe I'll go there with some spray paint.
Don't tell us that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Becca had her hand up first, Ms. Majors.
I have been in different towns where at the edges of town, there are signs, whether they're the lighted ones or permanent, that say, "All traffic laws strictly enforced." And some people actually do pay attention to that, and that may be a reasonable cost way to, it'll take a little bit, but if we start ticketing them every time they break those laws, we get a reputation and laws start being followed.
I think the signs themselves.
Once again, there is some truth to that. However, let's just talk about the new U-turn sign. There's this sign, plain as day, and they will make U-turns there hundreds of times a day. And if it was lit with flags and fireworks, people would sue you. Just the same reason why do people run red lights. Everybody knows what a red light is, but it comes down to the type of drivers that we're dealing with, commuter drivers. Most of them don't care, so.
There's a yield sign there also, and they don't yield.
And Ms. Majors, did you have one comment? And then we've got to wrap it up and let Ms. Ty finish up.
Miss DeGan and Divas know that I'm very vocal to, I'm very vocal, somebody knows that, but I'm very vocal to Tech Dot and to Chief Divas about 287, and getting officers out there. That's why I knew about that we'll have the motorcycle officer to help us to slow down traffic. But I contact Tech Dot a lot to, and that's what I ask the citizens that we need to contact, you know, you have an issue, contact them. That's the only way. We have 36,000 people traveling through here. I know that because I ask them, I call them all the time because I've seen so many accidents myself, and I've asked them, why do we have 38, or, excuse me, 3848? Is that right?
3433.
3433. Sorry, I'm a little confused tonight. Crossover and the 18-wheelers. What can we do with it? I've asked, you know, Divas, you know, what can we do? Can we get officers out there, be in the welcome committee just to, you know, slow them down? What can we do with Aurora contract? Can council, can y'all go back and look at it? Why do we have officers over there? I went to Divas myself recently. I asked him, why does Boyd, I've watched them go and give someone a ticket. He, you know, Boyd has an officer just to write tickets, to slow them down. They have a contract with New Fairview for $105,000. Go back, council, look at our contract, what we have with Aurora, and what we, in the square footage that we are patrolling there, and what we are doing, and the accidents that we have on 287. So thank you so much. Y'all have a good night.
Okay. And Ms. Ty?
Okay, so he also stated he wanted stricter penalties and fines that should be imposed on offenders to reinforce seriousness of these safety concerns. Every traffic violation is a safety concern. Fines and penalties are assessed by the state and the local judge. The total fine for a U-turn violation is $262. I don't know if we can raise that or if we want to. I asked Councilmember Schumake what their U-turn violations were, and it was 100 and something, so it's 100 bucks lower.
Does that include court costs?
That does include. 262 includes court costs.
Right. I'm thinking that's pretty close to the maximum amount.
It might be. She just said that we would have to justify why we wanted it to raise up, and they possibly could look into it, but I don't know. Do you have any information on that?
I don't know what our particular time structure is, but that is outlined by the city. So there's a maximum fine, and there's court costs.
So, and we also have discussed, and I had to look this up because I didn't know what they were called, surface-mounted flexible delineators. And those are those little pylons that go in between the lanes of traffic, and we had discussed doing that maybe when Mr. McCabe was on council, and I think people were concerned about trying to go to City Hall, and it's being blocked off, and once you get past those pylons, you can make a legal U-turn. So would, do we want that? I mean, is that a fix? Or, I don't know what to do, but I'm throwing out these suggestions because these are what our citizens are saying, oh, we, this is what you need to do, and this is what you need to do, and this is what you need to do. And we can't do any of it because Tech Dot is in control of whatever, all of that, all of that area.
Something that we can continue to do is be a collective voice. And so what I would call on the citizens to do then is, like Ms. Major said, reach out to Tech Dot. We will do our part in reaching out to Tech Dot, and we'll also try to be creative and find solutions. I do know that when the school district put Eaton High School and Adams Middle School right there, I think that's Bond's Ranch Road right there, the traffic, because they didn't have a service road that went all the way through, there were multiple meetings between the school district and Tech Dot to try to get that and push that through. Now that the school district also has a bus barn in Rome between 287 and 114, it's possible I will reach out to my contacts with them and see who did they talk to at Tech Dot? How did they do that? And I'm also wondering about the other businesses that are in that pie shape between 114 and 287 that have semi-trucks pulling, trying to go in and out of there. If we could combine our efforts to try to improve the situation, it might benefit all parties.
And that's, one of my points is, we're trying to get anything in the stoplight in front of Biwell, 287, where the trucks come out and turn left instead of going right or whatever it is that it says. Tech Dot's not even doing anything with places where there's fatalities, and we have a small U-turn problem, and...
So I think we just, we have to appreciate where Mr. Godfrey's frustration is coming from. I can definitely appreciate that. I think most people in the room can, but we just have to continue to beat the drum and work on it to the best of our ability.
This is where I say we've got a great misunderstanding, and this is where it becomes, council often gets blamed for things that are well outside their control. You can certainly have input. We can draft letters. We can petition folks that are in elected positions, and we will and can, we do and will continue to do so in that particular vein, but Tech Dot is a very large department within the state's government, and I've yet to find many folks who have had a pleasant and happy experience when they've had to deal with something along those lines. I've not had the pleasure to work for Tech Dot, so I don't know about their internal controls. I have visited some of their offices, and I do think that they do the best that they can as well, under most circumstances. But it is a frustration for every city I have ever worked for or any person who's ever been in traffic. They have always had a frustration with Tech Dot.
Well, and this is a huge misunderstanding because this person was a prior mayor, so he should understand that all of this is out of our control, but he has blamed the council and staff and everyone else.
We can refrain from, you know, let's not, let's not make our citizens into adversaries.
I'm not making, I'm just saying there's misunderstandings out there because he was the mayor.
There are misunderstandings, but as I said, let's not specifically point out someone to make them an adversary.
He's the one that wrote the letter.
I understand that. But, you know, I just, I just don't believe in publicly.
I understand why you, why you're saying something, so, yeah.
It just doesn't sit well, and you all want to create public trust, but it doesn't create public trust when you, when you, you know, basically, as I say, you're combative. You know, the guy has an opinion. He writes in.
He has an opinion, and I wasn't combative. I was explaining that there was a misunderstanding, and he was the mayor. So the people that weren't mayors aren't part of the city council. They don't understand even less than he does sometimes. It, it needs to be read.
Okay, well...
I move to take a brief recess.
Why don't we, if you want to wrap it up, Mrs. Ty, let's go on.
Randall, Mr. Johnson seconded. Can we have a vote on the recess? Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I guess the recess is over for Mrs. King. So, Mrs. Ty, you want to finish this up?
I'm finished.
Okay. All right, let's go to number five, Council Calendar Update.
Thank you, Mayor. This is simply an update to your existing calendar, since we had the issue with the meeting that we were going to hold on the 19th, and we rescheduled it to the 10th of February, I believe. Yes, I have my dates correct. So it simply updates your calendar, so I can put that on the website and make sure that people are aware of when we're meeting.
Okay. Any questions? All right, let's go to number six, Capital Improvement Plan Overview.
Thank you. So this item, we've had some additional technical difficulties with my laptop. It is not talking to our server, so I do not have the presentation that will go online. However, I will post it on the website. There is, for those who may not recall, we did create a tab on the website for any presentation that council receives. It is on there for residents or anyone else who wants to go back and look at the slide deck, just in case we have an issue such as this. So I'm going to walk you through some of this information. We have discussed some of this before, so it may be a little bit repetitive, but it is also going to set the stage for some of those discussions that we have on the 10th. So if you will follow along with the slide deck that you have at your desk, please. So looking at the capital projects, from the standpoint of updating our capital improvement plan, there are going to be several components of that plan that include roadways and stormwater runoff, excuse me, water and wastewater facilities, other five-year lookouts as it relates to both revenue and expenditures, staffing levels, et cetera. So this will be a very comprehensive look at all of our operations from top to bottom. So as we continue through that, I'm going to start with the roadway system in that first slide that you have on your presentation. And as you know, we have major highways of state, Highway 114 and US Highway 81, 287. Then we have Main Street, which is Highway 81, 287 business, and we have FM 3433 that carry a lot of traffic through Rome. Those are all roadways that are not within our span of control. I know we've had some issues. I spoke to one person who actually exited over here by where the new QT is to get off to go 114 towards Bridgeport. There was a very large pothole in the exit. Their truck was severely damaged as a result therein, and they called, wanting the city to try and be of help to them. And I did have to direct them to Tech dot. And that's where that confusion comes in. People who are not in city government day in and day out, that is, sometimes it's difficult to make that separation. The roadway is within your city boundaries, so you make the assumption that the city has total care and control over that, and we do not. What we do have, though, is approximately 25.89 miles of streets within our city limits. Approximately 5% of that is curbing gutter, meaning you would see the curb that you would hopefully not run into when you're driving your car. And you would have the gutter runoff that would take your water as it whisks it away for your stormwater down through an underground system to move it off that particular paved area. When we had a capital improvement plan that was put together, this is one that we have from 2016 that was done by Jacob and Martin, who was our engineer at the time, we've had a mini brush-up of this back in about the 2020 timeline that Kimberly Horn put together that I also obtained from Kyle Weldon. So some of this is going to be an amalgamation of both of these, so that you have some sort of an idea of what we were looking at then and what we're looking at now. But back when this one was done in 2016, they said approximately 5% of our streets were in low to poor condition. We have done, at least in talking with Mr. Dominguez, we've done very little to maintain or repair our streets in most parts of Rome, and so that number no longer holds. So even though you see it on your slide deck, know that came from the information that we had in 2016. One of the other things that you can take out of this report from Jacob and Martin from 2016, they did set some goals and objectives for the streets for the city, which I have listed here for you, and I can read off some of these fairly quickly for those who don't have the slide deck. But one of the goals for the roadway system was to have a safe and drivable street system that can accommodate the city's vehicular demands. Some of that goes to the frustration that we see from people who are driving through Rome, and there's just not enough egress for all the people that are coming through. I know we had a number discussed tonight that about 36,000 people go through here. I would love to have a traffic counter and put it out on various streets for ourselves, so we would know, because it would not only give us a traffic count, but also the speeds. And I think we have one, don't we? But those things would give us a real-time view, because I would bet you that number is probably gone up since the last time Tech dot did a study. Just given Bluestem and Reunion coming online, and given all the development that's come in Boyd, I know, I've lived out here for many, many years, and exponentially, we have more people coming through our city than we ever did before. So the objective of that particular goal, to have a street system that can accommodate the city's needs, we need to continue to inspect the road surfaces and repair them when necessary. You will see on your slide deck, there is two items that they list in priority that we should be maintaining and doing each year. One of them is the seal coat program. We talked about potentially purchasing at some point a trailer that would allow staff to seal coat or to crack seal the roads that we have through. As we've also discussed, we don't have staff to handle this. So if we determine, in some of our conversations, that we are going to go down this road, we are either going to have to contract that out with a third party, or we are going to have to hire someone, or maybe two someones, in order to take care of that workforce. One of the things that we don't really talk about is cleaning and deepening the ditches on each side of the roadways within Rome. We do have a significant amount of culverts and runoff and grated edges of asphalt where it's not curbing gutter that we're not maintaining as well as, I would say that this report states that we should, because it does say that's an every-year project. Then you will look at your next slide with the top where it says city projects. These are all roads that, when I looked at the information that Kimberly Horn gave us from 2020, I segregated the roads that had those that are state or county responsibilities versus what is a city responsibility. Because when I first came to Rome, and I was looking at the CIP, and I picked it up, I saw all the state highways, and I thought, why are those listed on our capital improvement plan? That's not our financial responsibility from which to tend to. And in talking with our engineer, he stated that we listed that on that plan in 2020 just to keep it in front of the community and Tech dot and others, which is an admirable idea, but it also creates the illusion that the state or the city has control over those roads, and we don't. So I've separated those back out, because I think we're going to have to do some additional education and put out more information, so that residents understand what we're responsible for paying for and repairing versus what the state or the county is responsible for. So you'll see that where it says city project, there's about 13 of those listed. These come from the 2016 report, the 2020 report, and a couple that I have talked to Mr. Dominguez about. And I'm sure if we all put our heads together, we would find there are some on this list that are missing. But it gives us a starting point for our conversation on the 10th. Excuse me. If you'll go to the next slide, you'll see those state or county projects that I discussed with you, that I pulled those out. For instance, the State Highway 114 and US 287 signal light, the one here that would go by QT, we'd all love to see that. It's been quite a while coming, but it's not our responsibility to put that in. We don't have care and control of it. Same thing with Main Street and road repair. Same thing at State Highway 114 and Alliance Boulevard, which is the Biwell Estate, for those that are not necessarily familiar with the name of that road. That signal light has been on this list for many years, at least since 2020 that I originally saw, and I would imagine since before then. FM 3433, they recommended widening to a four-lane divided major arterial. County Road 4651, three-lane undivided minor arterial. Then they talked about FM 3433 and Ramhorn Hill Connection. Again, those are not within the city's purview from which to repair. They would be great, it would certainly help traffic and congestion, but it is not necessarily the city's responsibility to fund. And then widening Ramhorn Hill Road. If you will look down at the next slide where it says development-related, I segregated these out from the 2020 report, because a lot of these were dependent upon the Prairie Point development when it was proposed at that time. The current conversation with Prairie Point may not apply. For instance, this Hickory to Future Joy Road, it says dependent on Prairie Point. We'll have to relook at these that say development-related, when and if Prairie Point comes back up before council as we move through this process. I have also included the Master Thoroughfare Plan on the next slide for you to review. It is a little small and hard to read. I do have large 11-by-17 printed copies for you that I will hand out on the 10th. I also included a Master Thoroughfare Plan cross-section, so that if you were wondering what a four-lane divided major arterial looks like, you can go and reference this slide, and we'll kind of give you a sliced view of how that would look at street level. If you look at the next slide deck where it says Capital Improvement Plan, this is lifted from the 2020 update from Kimberly Horn, and it has some things ranked in a variety of orders. You'll see that project number one is the light here at QT. And at the time in 2020 that this was put together, that was our first priority. I'm not sure we would all agree that is such now. It is needed, but I'm not sure that's the first priority, so these are things that we will look at. The next slide deck talks about the storm drainage system, and this is not something that is in most of our residents' day-to-day forethought. They're not necessarily worried about where the stormwater runs off. Our city actually drains into three different creeks. West Fork of the Trinity, Derek Creek, and Elizabeth Creek, and that is according to your 2016 CIP from Jacob and Martin. We do have several storm culverts at street crossings, low channels, and ditches, and we have four areas of our city which are in the 100-year floodplain from FEMA. As it relates to the stormwater runoff, the plan from Jacob and Martin talked about minimizing or eliminating flooding at the Morrison-Dogwood Street intersection and the area of the Biwell Estates. I don't know if this has been done, but I listed it here because it was a goal that was very specific to that plan. We'll need to check on that. But if you look at the second goal, where it says minimize or eliminate potential flooding through residential areas, it had some timelines there to regrade silted ditch lines by 2020, clean out silted structures by 2020. I don't believe we've done any of those. It also talks about replacing undersized culverts by 2036, and we've not, we don't have that on our radar. So these are things that we'll want to fold into the conversation that you're going to have on the 10th, to kind of broaden that look at capital projects from a view past what we have for water and wastewater. As I mentioned to you also, excuse me, we will also fold in a five-year forecast as it looks for revenue and expenditures, so that you'll have some sort of projection as to what we might see. For instance, the opening of the QT, any of the sales tax revenue that we will realize from the rest of this fiscal year's income as it relates to those sales has not been fully realized in your current budget year. If the Ace Hardware on BC Rome comes in this fiscal year, I did not, I did not build that into your budget. I really do not like to build in revenue that I can't show to council. It gives you a false sense of monies that may not be there, and I don't want us to spend it and then look back and say, ooh, we should have waited. So I'm pretty conservative on any type of projection on revenue, so that we make sure that we stay within our budgeted amounts. So when we do mid-year adjustments, we may want to consider some changes, or we may just want to monitor it until the end of this fiscal year, and then realize any overage through the audit and fold it into fund balance and/or use it for some of these projects, as we've discussed. As you will recall, as we go through these discussions about capital projects, we did have an excess of revenues over expenditures for FY '22. You just received the audit at the last meeting. That will be one of the conversation points as to, do we want to allocate any of those funds that were over and above what we projected for any of these projects to cash fund them? So that might be something that we can do as well. This just gives a little bit of a view of the 10th, because we wanted to make sure that we were reaching as wide of an audience as possible. Some people will watch today's meeting, because it's not going to be as long as the one on the 10th, and they may not want to sit through six or seven hours with the conversation then, when we meet for the all-day discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this. This was mostly informational for you all this evening, and some of it, as I've mentioned, you've heard before.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to our discussions on the 10th.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, let's move along. Number seven, Water and Wastewater System Overview.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is going to take a little bit deeper dive. We talked about this at our December 14th meeting, and unfortunately, we had a technical snafu that did not record that session. We are recording now. So I want to make sure that we get this information out there, because we have several residents who are interested in the topic. You have several water system assets that we discussed on the 14th, that I'm going to quickly go over the high points of that presentation. One of the things I found most interesting is that our system as a whole for water was likely originally constructed in the 1940s to 1950s. We had some line upgrades in 1991 that were performed for various areas that were failing, but we've not had any systemic look at the entirety of the water system, which is the backbone of providing kind of public safety for our residents, if you will. As we've all just gone through another cold snap, and we had a line break, which the staff did an amazing job responding to, and they were out well into the wee hours of the morning tending to this. This is an important part of providing that public service to our residents. Water and wastewater is critical. We do have a Bobo pump station, there are three pumps that exist there. We have four groundwater wells with pump stations attached to those. We have the FM 3433 pump station, where there are two actual pumps within that. And the reason I'm giving you these numbers is because these pumps fail routinely, and we have to replace them, and they're not an inexpensive purchase. We have an elevated water storage tank, which oddly enough, it's a million gallons, which is wonderful, but it is past its time for being rehabbed as well. So we're going to have to fold that into our conversation. We have ground-stored water tanks, seven of those total, one at Bobo, or is it one, Mr. Dominguez, at Bobo? FM 3433, and then at the various well sites. As I will show you on the 10th, we actually have one of those at well number three, well six, I believe it is, that is leaning. Well three, the foundation underneath it has shifted, and we're going to have to do something about that fairly quickly. We have 17 and a half miles of supply and distribution lines for our water system, about 660 connections, and we have about a 19% loss rate, which is too high for a community our size. We are going to have to look at that. Now, strangely enough, it's not just leaks. The loss rate comes from water main breaks, like we had last week. We also have, when the fire department uses, or we have folks come into our community for mutual aid, and they hook up to our fire hydrants and they take water out, it's not metered, so it falls into the leak category. It's necessary for them to help fight a fire, it's just one of those leak points that we have. We have household leaks that are unaccounted for, irrigation systems, meter malfunctions, and just inaccuracy overall. So that's one of the things that Mr. Dominguez and I have talked about, is how do we get that number lower? We would like to see that down closer to the 5% range. So that's something that we'll be looking for, looking at. Your wastewater system assets, you do have an east and west wastewater treatment plant. We've talked about this many, many times. The east plant was built in 1991, however, it was also rehabbed fairly recently, and it is in very good working condition, and it is, has several of the things in place for it that is needed at the west plant, which was constructed in 1998 and has not been upgraded since we installed it. There's nine and a half miles of gravity flow piping to both of these plants, which is maintained by our staff, and we have just under a mile of... And we have just under a mile of sewer force mains, 150 manholes, two main lift stations, and one collection lift station, all maintained by a staff of four folks. As we look at future planning and needs and resources for this system, that will be one of the asks that come forward. We do need personnel in those areas that can be of assistance, just in general, because we've got a very large system, and two wastewater treatment plants is unusual for a community. As you can see there, also on your slide deck that we discussed before, we've had a tremendous number of studies and reviews and discussions about the system, and we've not done a lot to address some of the concerns. They go back to 2016. You can see we have master plans for both the east and the west plant. We have an overall wastewater system master plan. We have a long-term water supply study that was done in 2020. So it's great that we have these. They're now all dated. I'm not advocating that we update all of them, but we do need to do something based on what these plans show. And so as we go through this process, this will be some of the things that we discuss. One of the more interesting pieces, as it relates to the investment in the system over the past 33 years, we've only invested about $8 million in the entirety of our system itself, which is about $240,000 a year, if you amortize that out, which is less than the depreciation. We're not keeping up with this system in any way, shape, or form. I've had staff take photos of the inside of our tanks, the rust that exists. We have ground storage water tanks with holes in the lids. They're not really lids, I guess it's the top, you would call it. We've got the leaning tank, as I talked about, and we've talked about this, as I've shown, for many, many years, and we've not put ourselves forward to fix it. And when we have a failure, because it's not a question of if, it's a matter of when, we're going to have a lot of angry residents who are not only going to look at you all sitting in this chair as current council, but they're also going to look at all the councils that came before them. And it's not one council's issue. This is a 30-year issue that has not been addressed. We talked about this as it relates to the wastewater system and the fact that we did not change those wastewater rates for more years than I care to think about. But it's very important that we all, as a community, have an understanding how important these structures are to the city and to their day-to-day life, and why we have to take care of them, because we've not done the best job that we could in that area. One of the other things that is interesting, and I do encourage people who are listening tonight or who go back and listen, to go back and look at the 14th. The slide deck is already out there from December. And when you look at Slide 8, that talks about the fund performance from 2003 to 2024, we have as many years in the red for utility fund as we have in the black. We made some hard decisions in 2022 and 2023 to increase some rates as it relates to wastewater and water. And so far, it looks like that we may have a little bit of a surplus in those years. But if you recall in our audited numbers for 2022, I told you that we needed to look at those through the lens of some additional one-time revenue. So for instance, your 22 numbers originally predicted about $250,000 excess in revenue. It actually ended up being just under $42,000. So we have to be mindful of where we set those rates at, and we have to be mindful of what this fund is doing as far as performance is concerned, because the utility fund, which handles your water and wastewater, ought to be self-sufficient. It should take care of not only your day-to-day expenses, your debt, and it should be planning for future costs, so that you can reinvest in the system in and of itself. So I would urge people to go back and take a look at that. When we had an audit done in 2013 from Peter Cheney, who was the CPA for the city at the time, he came in front of council and advised that the water and sewer fund was approaching insolvency. He found deficiencies as far back as 2005, which was, the fund was upside down by 25,000. In 2010, he said it was in the negative by 261,000. In 2011, 265,000 in the negative. 2012, 265,000 negative, and 2013, 423,000. It was at that point that he was stating that this would become insolvent. It would affect a tremendous amount of financial issues for the city. There were some decisions made to change rates, but not until 2016. So three years after this report came out, we changed some rates, and we started to see a little bit of a difference in that fund. And we did do some changes incrementally, like one year we had a couple, two or three rate changes, and we spaced them out throughout the year. But this is all information that has been out there. It's information that has been discussed. I just don't know that we've had it in a holistic, centralized place for not only council to understand the depth and breadth of what we're dealing with here, but also for the community to have an understanding, because I know there have been in the past some bonds that have been put forward to reinvest in the system that did not, they were not approved. And that's very unusual for any community, because it's a reinvestment in yourself. I cannot state to you in enough of a fashion that this is a problem, not just for water, but for wastewater. And we've been saying that. It doesn't matter if I'm sitting here as your city manager, or the previous one, or the one before, or you all as previous councils. This has been discussed for 20 years, off and on. And we've had a system that's been in place for over 30, and we've not invested in it as we should. So I did include in your slide deck some water rate reviews, which were also done by a company that we hired to take a look at what we were charging. I won't belabor you with all of those again, because the slide deck is not viewable by everyone. That makes it difficult for it to be understood. We do have the same thing for the water rate review as it relates to the residential side. There are some things that we can do to consider some changes to how the ratings go. We'll talk about those on the 10th. See, if you'll go down to Slide 16, and you'll look at the average use of water. Residential average for Rome, the last time a study was done, was about 5,000 gallons. Commercially, it's about 18,000 gallons. That was taken from the NewGen rate study that we had completed in 2020, 2021 timeframe. Excuse me, I do have an updated quote from NewGen if we want to revisit those rates. We really should be looking at our rates every year. We should be making incremental adjustments every year, so that we are not having a massive increase at one time that shocks everyone who receives a bill. That's really the best way to go about managing your fund and managing your system, but we've put that off for a long time. The state programs and the grants and loans, because I know that is something that gets discussed routinely in Rome, and it is something that we should look at. We have the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the Texas Water Development Fund, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, all of these ones that Mr. Loftus and I and Mr. Dominguez talked to folks about to see what was available to us. I have also recently talked this week with a representative from TWDB to determine how we get on the state's water plan that they are amending currently. So we do have time. That's a couple-of-year process, and he sent me some direct links from which to work through that. The SWIFT loans, if we want to apply for one of those, the deadline is March 1st. So when we talk on the 10th, I will need direction, so that we could potentially apply for one of those. I'm probably going to go ahead and start some of the paperwork, just in case, at least gathering the things that we need, so that if that's the direction I receive from council, I at least have some of the initial work done. As we mentioned before, we don't have an internal grant writer, so it's a difficult task to get some of these projects pulled together. You also know that we've attended some Wise Regional Water meetings, not only just for Southern Wise, but we've also attended some of those as it relates to the county in and of itself. There are some sources of water. As I've mentioned to you before, the city of Rome currently receives 95% of its water from Walnut Creek, which is a blessing to have, that we do have that stable, to the most part, water source from a third party, but it is a very expensive purchase in water. If we had the ability, or we were in an area where we could drill wells more prolifically than what we have now, we could offset some of that cost, because it's pennies on the dollar compared to what we're paying per 1,000 gallons with Walnut Creek. But at current, we're just not quite there. Let's see, I think that's about the conclusion of the slide deck for tonight.
I do have one more thing to add with that Walnut Creek. Wasn't there a year that our contract with them expires that we need to be?
Correct. So that is an excellent point, and thank you for bringing that up. We were able to renegotiate that contract with them last year, and we were able to get that extended through October of 2029. It was set to expire, when was that, this year? It was set to expire this year, and then we would have had no water. So they extended it to 2029 in October. But I will tell you, as I have said before, there are other cities who have contacted Walnut Creek who are lining up for our capacity at that time, because they desperately need it for their own community. So we need to consider another water source for Rome, and that is of utmost importance to anything else that we do. Any other questions from council? So we will dive into this deeper on the 10th. We have talked about this, as I said, most of the time that I've been here, which is over a year now. And we've got to start making some decisions to move forward. I know there's been a lot of good suggestions about grants and applying for free money, and we absolutely can do that. It takes approximately two years to go through that cycle, and we really don't have two years to waste. If we are starting our new contract with Walnut Creek, and it expires in '29, that five years is going to go by quicker than we can think about. And if we don't have something in place, we will not have enough water from the current four wells that we operate to supply water to people's homes. We just won't. Any other questions from council?
All right. You want to do executive session with no attorney?
Yes, I do.
Oh, he is? Okay, good. So it is 8:11, convene into executive session.
This conference will now be recorded.
You ready? 8:28, now we reconvene into regular session. The council's going to vote on, this is regarding the Prairie Point development. Council will vote. We need a motion to allow the city administrator to continue negotiating with those developers.
I make the motion, and she can go continue.
Okay. And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. And future agenda items? Anything? I do have one. It's about the donation that we do make to the library. I don't remember what time of year we make that.
My understanding, it is about this time of year.
Okay. So I'd like for that to be put on future agenda, please. And anything else? Okay, very good. Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
It's 8:29. Do I need, I need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okeydoke.